Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for coming out. It's good to see people we haven't seen and get through the snow. We haven't had a meeting since January. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and it looks like we certainly have forum. First item of business is approval of minutes from January 13th board meeting. See if there's any discussion, if everybody's had a chance to look it over, any corrections or edits. If not, I'll take a motion. I'll move that we accept the minutes from the January 13th meeting.
Second.
With a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. There you go. The next item is approval of minutes from a special meeting that was held on November 20th. Hopefully, same, you've had a chance to look at that one.
I move that we accept the minutes for the November 20th meeting as presented.
Forty seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Anything.
Sorry. Cheryl wasn't here. And Louis. Okay. Okay. Good, Cheryl?
That's out of his absence.
Okay. Our next item of business is citizens' time. I have one person who is going to speak. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. Samantha Good.
Hi, everybody. I'm Samantha Good. I've lived in the county for all over 10 years now. I just wanted to come up today and thank you all for everything that you have done to create this wonderful library. Reading has been very important to me since I was a child. I did not have a big childhood, and it was once again for me. And then I moved here, and I had my daughter and decided to stay home with her, and I really struggled to get out of the community because I just didn't know anybody here. And the first place I brought her was Storytime at the library with Ms. Patty, who we adore and miss so much. And we came to Storytime every week, and my daughter still loves it, and she is seven, and she's homeschooled, and she still loves coming because it's just such a beautiful place for her to come and interact with other people, and she knows most of the staff by name and announces her entrance very loudly when she comes. Little detectors. She's like, "Hi, everybody, I'm here." And we love that this is one of the, this is the only real place that we can come to play with other children when it's cold outside, and we meet so many families. We actually, we meet other homeschool families, so we've been able to establish a really great social network. And when I, I, everybody, I got to know everybody, and they recommend things to me. We're going to start doing science scouts here with Ms. Pat, who we also know very well. We're very excited for that. And your staff let me know, "Hey, aren't you a homeschool mom? You know you can get a teacher card, and you won't have to worry about those shorter deadlines to get books in," because my daughter absolutely loves to read. She is seven years old, and she is reading chapter books, and she just loves, she actually got into Dogman because the books you have here. She needs to read graphic novels, so she's still young, so she needs that kind of stimulation. And you guys have such a wonderful selection for her. She reads, she actually, she always enters into your reading, your winter reading programs and your summer reading programs, and she makes her list herself. And she was so proud to bring in a list for the winter reading program that said she'd read 25 books in a week. And I just think it is so important for children to appreciate literature at a young age, and I am so proud that our community has such a wonderful place to introduce children to learning and to education for reading. And I'm just so grateful, as a homeschool parent, that it's a resource, because like I said, I was new to the community, and I didn't know where to go. And I feel like I've gained a community here. I still keep in touch with some librarians who have left, who I'm here with me. So I just want to say I really appreciate you guys very much, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. It's president's time, so I have a little, couple of things beyond just this audience. We have, we were, we are recording tonight, so it will be on YouTube, thanks to our amazing staff member, Amy. A couple of things. Over the weekend, one of our trustees was at the receiving end of some bullying behavior while he was going about normal business at our local transfer station. What he and I talked about was how there was no reasoning with that particular individual, and it just reminded us that we're facing a divisive time in our little community, and we need to get back to having civil discourse. Tonight, I ask everyone to seek the truth and not be quick to accept any story that comes across. Just because someone says it's a fact doesn't necessarily mean that that is really the truth. Let's take the whole FOIA discussion. When you read the rules, and I have the document here, it's called Access to Public Meetings Under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and you get the actual rule and not the cherry-picked information meant to smear the library's reputation. In that document, it says, "When must a notice be posted?" For regular meetings, the notice must be posted at least three working days prior to the meeting. A regular meeting is what we're having tonight. For special, emergency, or continued meetings, notice reasonable under the circumstance of special, emergency, or continued meetings must be given at the same time that the notice is provided to the members, that's the trustees, of the public body conducting the meeting. So that means that as the notice is going out to the, to the trustees, it also has to be posted on the same day. FOIA defines an emergency as "an unforeseen circumstance rendering the notice required by FOIA impossible or impracticable and which circumstance requires immediate action." On December 10th, the county voted four to one to establish the Warren County Library Board despite public outcry, with 97 people speaking out against the ordinance in question. On December 13th, an email was sent to Library Board of Trustees, including Mrs. Colerse, to call for a special or emergency meeting. On December 17th, to discuss how this would legally affect the library. A notice was posted even before the email was sent. The agenda was handed out on the evening of the meeting to everyone at the same time, and minutes of that meeting have been approved on January 13th and posted to our website for all to see. Therefore, according to FOIA rules outlined above, there was no FOIA violation. Articles. Samuel's Public Library is independent of Warren County. We are engaged in a public-private partnership with the county to provide services. We come with our own rules of governance, policies, and assets in order to get the job done. The Board of Trustees govern this independent charitable organization, not the county nor its agents. The trustees have every right to make changes as it deems necessary, and the change to paragraph 10 in the article of corporation were approved by the Commonwealth of Virginia State Corporation Commission on January 27th, 2025, and I have that approval from Virginia here with me, in case anybody needs to see it. The assets are secured for us to fulfill our mission of providing library services to the people of Warren County. The idea of sending them anywhere, let alone out of the area, is made up. The idea that we would even consider dissolution is made up. We aren't going anywhere. Other nonprofits in the county also provide services, and they come with their own assets. As to the 25 days that's been thrown out there, those rules apply only to corporations with members. We do not have members. Thus, that particular argument is null and void. As for furniture and fixtures, when we moved to the new location on Kreiser Road, the county gave the library a loan to purchase additional furniture and fixtures, as the square footage had more than doubled. The Board of Supervisors at that time were invested in seeing that the library succeed at its new location. All but $256,372 of the loan had been repaid at the time of the purchase of the Villa Avenue building, and so the agreed-upon purchase price was reduced to forgive the outstanding loan. Therefore, with the repayment of the loan, the furniture and fixtures then belonged to the library. I could go on, but we have a meeting to run. The point is, we're asking everyone to please be careful out there about the information being spread, that it's not just a rumor or conjecture, and please be kind and patient to each other in the community as we go forward. The good news is that people all over the country are watching what happens here in our community. Donations and messages of support have been coming in, now from 18 states and counting, and our Canadian neighbors. You love this library, and we are working hard to continue providing you the excellent services you deserve. Thank you for your patience with me, and now on with the meeting. I turn it over to Erin, our library director, for her report.
All right. So this is in the board packet, so I won't read everything completely in it, but just some highlights. We had our technical service assistant position filled with Janelle Dixon starting end of January. She's been a fantastic addition to our adult reference department. We are continuing to look for ways that we can cut back on general maintenance and other opportunities and such. So we are continuing to get in quotes from, for building and maintenance, for landscaping, lawn maintenance for next fiscal year, but we're also looking at ways that we can make the next fiscal year go a little bit more smoothly. The adult reference manager and myself had a really great meeting with Social Services on ways that we can collaborate for more programming and resources. One of the things we were able to do is go regularly to their resource fair, which has been a great opportunity to offer the, or get the information about what resources we have available for people that need job development help and the like. We were also able to work out, having the job fairs now at Samuel's Library, I'll be able to talk about that more next report, as we just had it here this month. It went fantastic. That's with Virginia Works, and we'll be doing that regularly at least once a quarter, or hopefully we maybe even get it done bimonthly. Other things for facility, people may have noticed a notice to update their SPL-to-go app for library services on their phones. This was great because it was able, we were able to add in some new services, as well as catalog searching. There's a new thing for alerts as well. If anybody opts in for that, you're able to, if we have a special program, we'll be able to give you an alert for your phone that, when that's coming available, or if we have unexpected closures, like during winter months. Other things as well is we can do some more item carousels for books to help people with browsing, and people, a little bit of an ability for us to customize the screens, which is great. We are also finishing up our server migration, which is part of our technology replacement plan, which is covered by state aid, and we are evaluating the needs for some of the software, as we can actually cut back on some of our subscriptions, which will help with costs, as we've gotten rid of some of the PC public computers that we haven't needed. Going into usages, our usage and service, February wasn't available at the time of the report. We're still up 2% in our circulation. Traffic count is up 6%, which is actually fantastic for winter months. Total patrons added is up 22%. We are still down with the 3%, and that's mostly because we have gotten very good at regularly keeping our databases updated, so we do purge accounts that have been, you know, that haven't been in the library in years. And of course, database is still climbing. We're up 34% as of FY '24 in January. That includes things like ancestry, regal music, transparent language, and Magster have all seen significant increases. For programming highlights, we had winter reading, just ended at the, at the beginning of this month. Adult winter reading, we had 132 participants, with 73 people completing the challenge, which is great. We had total participants read a combined 214,000 minutes over the course of the entire challenge itself. For kids, they're still going by books read, so we had 360 participants who read a total of 12,398 books. As part of the winter reading program, Michael Ashby, our youth service manager, taught a STEM program on growing crystal snowflakes, which was great, and it was able to, kids were able to learn about Wilson Alwyn Bentley, who was the first person to photograph an actual snowflake. They had a cooking blizzard program that allowed children to create cute little creatures out of edible coconut and chocolate snowballs. They had about 20 attendees. Kids absolutely loved it. That's one of the pictures that are in the report. And our storytimes are still an absolute hit with Carolyn. She's doing a fantastic job, especially music and movement, which has gotten so popular. It's hit over 50 attendees in several of the different sessions. So due to that popularity, we are looking into adding an additional session during the week that will break it up into age ranges. And then, of course, the studio is busy as, as always. We had walk-in hours, about 27 people in the studio in January and another 27 in February, and then over 15 appointments in January and 10 in February. Memory Lab still seems to be the most popular at the moment, and they've started up doing many more programs, such as Fiber Arts Club called String Theory, and another group that's doing, of course, we have the crochet and knitting. So, here's my report for this board meeting.
Any questions for Erin?
I just have a personal question.
Yes.
Do they, do I see something where they need, like, like they need donations for the studio?
So I will be talking about that in my report for the next board meeting, but they are currently doing a craft swap, so they are asking people to come in with donations so that later this month, people will be going in to be able to pick out any craft supplies that they like.
Okay. And another question, do they take Legos?
I, I wouldn't say we wouldn't take Legos. You know, it's my, my craft.
Okay. Okay. And then my only other question, because I'm just curious, are they doing the Bigfoot thing again this year?
Yes. So that's an upcoming program that's going to be April.
I heard that was a hit last year, so I'm kind of interested in knowing.
It's, I believe it's the week of April 6th. I can't remember off the top of my head, I apologize, but yes, we are getting Mike Filament back. He is a guy who goes around trying to hunt Bigfoot, and he's got like a, it was a blast last, last time he comes with his truck. He's got like the footprint casts and everything. It's a blast. So once that becomes available, register, I highly recommend it.
Yeah. And be sure to register, because my daughter and I ended up sitting in the hall. Because we forgot.
We did not realize it was going to be that hot.
I would like to make a correction. It is Lego.
Oh, I'm sorry. What did he say?
As a founder of the Front Row Lego Club.
Is the facts right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Any other questions for Erin?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on, I'm going to turn it over to Joan, who's the chair of our Strategic Planning Committee.
We met in January, and we reviewed the strategic plan, that, the new five-year strategic plan that was just approved last May. We're reviewing it to tighten it up and to make sure that, that there's no loose ends in it, but it's pretty tight right now. We reviewed the plan, made some changes, and we will again take a look at the strategic plan next month and get it ready to present to the Board of Trustees for approval for the year. We review the plan, and we present it to the Board of Trustees every year so that we make sure that it's updated and correct. So that happens every year with us working on a new five-year plan every five years. So stay tuned. It'll, it's coming. We'll be looking at it, looking to present it to the Board of Trustees for approval next May, this May.
Any questions for Joan? Okay. Our next committee report is finance. I'll turn it over to our treasurer, Michelle.
Okay. So the finance committee met February 5th. The main purpose of the meeting was that we made, just wanted to go over some final changes before we presented to the, to the Board of Supervisors our budget. So I'm not going to go over the notes. The notes are here. So the biggest news is that we did present our budget to the Board of Supervisors. I want to thank everybody for attending and supporting us. We presented $1,193,261 to the Board of Supervisors, and again, I want to stress that this is just a request, and you know that, Cheryl. Like, this isn't like we are forcing the Board of Supervisors and saying, "We need this money." This is a request. This is, we do this every year. We never get what we fully request. We go back and forth with questions at this point, and we wait for the Board of, the Board of Supervisors holds the purse, first string, so they can tell us what they can afford. And so that's where we are right now. The largest increase is due to $54,000 in maintenance, and I didn't bring it up that evening, but that's something that the public works should be able to reduce their budget by, because it's no longer coming out of public works. We're taking on our own maintenance. So that's something that we should see come out of public work, since we're putting it in our own budget. I don't know if that's, they get that granular, but because we're putting it in our budget, they should be able to take it out of their budget. Does that make sense? So just wanted to bring that up. And of course, the other was our COLA increases, cost of living increases for employees. Vicki Cook made a request that we do, the other thing that was, has been requested is that we keep track of the county's spend in our expense reports, and what we decided to do, and you'll see that on our month's spend, is that Eileen's highlighting in blue where the county funding is going. And so as we get into our actual spend, that we go over in every meeting, every trustee meeting, the blue is representing where the county money is going. Okay? So that's a change we're going to make, a change that we've put in place, but Vicki wants to see that for future spending, as well as what we budgeted. So that's something we owe Vicki. The other thing is that Vicki did say that she was, she had questions that was sent to her from the Warren County Library Board, as well as other questions, and we're still waiting to receive those questions. Those haven't been sent to us. So as soon as we get those questions, we will address those questions and help, and explain any other budget questions they have. So just wanted to let everybody know that. Any other questions on the, on finance? Oh, let me go, sorry. Before I do that, let me go over our budget, our accounts. So in our escrow account right now, our total value on our escrow, and again, this, our endowment, sorry, in our endowment account, and again, this is for continued operations of our, the endowment account function is that we pull 3% interest from this every year to fill in the gap between, for operations from what we don't get from the county, what we don't get from the state, this covers, this helps us cover other, you know, our expenses. And so right now, the endowment account is $1,066,792. Our operating account is at $46,358. Our reserve account is $176,985. And then our Mellon Special Fund, and again, just this Mellon grant, is $78,498. Okay? And then we have foundation funds at $8,097, and then $7,167. So those are the account balances we have. Any question on those?
I have a question.
Yes.
What's left of the Mellon cover the remainder of? It's mainly just for the staff, right? Recover the remainder of what's left?
Primarily, it's just staff expenses left, and we do have a CD that will mature in April, I believe it is.
Is that with this price?
No, I don't know what the value on it is right now. How much did that start at? Do you remember?
I can get that and send it to everybody. I can't remember off the top of my head.
It's already rolled once. Knit roll?
Yep.
Rolled, but we pulled, so it will be plenty to make it through.
How often do we have to report back to the Mellon Foundation?
It's once a year, so we'll be putting in a report to them that will get to them before June 30th of this year.
Do they have their own, do they have their own reformat?
Yes. So they have a, so they have a portal online. They have all the information that we have to input.
Okay. Does any interest earned off of any of their money also goes to Mellon?
I'm just trying to make sure we have funds to cover.
I understand. Good question.
Yes.
Follow on to Louis's question. We've got $46,000 left in operations. We're one-third away through March. Is that enough to carry us through the end of March?
March.
And when we look for the next appropriation from the county on April 1st?
The county's appropriation request is sitting in the mailbox to go out tomorrow, and we have in the FY '25 budget, and I'm pulling the number off the top of my head, but I believe we had shown that we would transfer $47,000 to balance the budget.
From reserve?
From reserve. So if I need that to make it, I can move.
You can pull it? Yeah. Yeah.
One of the motions was to, to suggest the supervisors to cancel right now and go month to month. Has anybody heard anything, any actions on that? The other, the other thing is, is there something that says the total percent or the total amount of Warren County that's been spent? I see we've broken down individual things.
Yeah.
But I don't see the total of what's gone of Warren County and what's gone Virginia State Aid. So is that somewhere?
It's, the blue is the county, and the brown is the state aid.
You want a summary at the bottom, kind of. We can.
Yeah, is there a rollup?
It's, it is a work in progress.
Okay.
I can make sure that's.
We are, yes.
Michelle and I, we're going to talk some more about it tomorrow.
We have a meeting tomorrow, just a, not a, I don't have a committee meeting tomorrow, but we are meeting tomorrow to talk about more of our.
Kate and Michelle. Report.
Is there something else they request in addition to outbreak this down yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
They just want future, my understanding, Cheryl, is that they just want the blue in the future, right? They want a future look at where we're going to put, I guess, another quarter of county money.
I wasn't 100% clear on what the.
I thought I was.
And when you ask for line item, that would be, and I, of your operational, this looks like you have broken it down to what each.
Line is of what you use that for.
Now, if they're asking for line item of every expense, you know, out of every avenue, you know, your state funding, your unrestricted donations and that, then that's where I wasn't clear. Are they just, I mean, yeah, they want it all? Or do they just want, you know, to me, I kind of feel like, you know, if you want to give us all of it, I know the times that I have asked for, like the doors in the other room, to, you, within five minutes, you were able to give me, so I'm sure you've got the line by line. But that's where I wasn't really clear. Do they want it all, or do they just want where the money that we allocate of tax funds? Yeah, the brown indicates state expenditures, and they are not, state expenditures do not equal yet what we have received, but part of that is because so much of that will dump into the book line, the database line, once we finish all that up. So there's limitations to what I can. So there's limitations to what I can expense there.
But to Cheryl's point, I think what you're asking, like, is for like, I'm trying to look at one here, for.
Yeah. Piece of it is in brown, like, there's a larger total, but the brown piece is the state.
Right, but I'm saying, you know, we've got custodial services, well, or we've got, well, I'm trying to find one in blue, like, maintenance supplies, or build, you know, maintenance supply, small equipment, we've got $8,000 spent there. Do they want, if, I think.
Like receipts?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, if they want detail that's in there, I think they get receipts.
I think we need something that is clear of what exactly.
Or do they want to.
Or at least the start, or what they want to get the dialogue going.
I'll need an assistant if I have to do that. I mean, that's funny.
This is for annular, let me say it this way, this is as annular as it gets until you get into receipts.
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to say, and that makes sense.
If they want to come in and go through my files and my receipts, they're more than
welcome.
This is as low, this is, this is, this is as low as it goes until you get into receipts.
Yeah, right, and these are line items.
These are the.
So these are the line items, and these are the account codes for each area of expenses.
And to me, this, this gives a clear accounting of line items of where.
Money goes.
Where your, your, the taxpayer's money is going. They want to get it down more of, you know, what you pay for other things, because you've got books and material in your brown of your state money, you know, and you've got it clearly out there. There's where I'm confused, I, I think.
And the state is very, I think the state has specific rules as to what we can do with our state funding.
Very limited.
It's very limited, so that, their state money is very restricted.
So, so when we talk about restriction, this might be a good time to clarify that.
Yeah.
The state might, we go to the state first, because state money has very strict rules and very strict categories, and they say how much percent you can put into each category. And those funds basically are restricted, because we use state money for those, for those items. So that's restricted. Then we go to the county for operating expenses. That money's restricted, that money's restricted to operating expenses. We all know what operating expenses are, they're the basics, salaries and keeping the lights on, and maintenance, things that keep the building operational. So there, there really are restricted areas. And then these are line items. When you get past these line items, now you're drilling down to every single accounting entry. And that, you know, becomes prohibitive. It's doable, but it becomes prohibitive, and who's, you know, who's going to pay for that accountant to come in and do that? That's what the auditors do every year. They drill down into all the receipts, and they make sure that, you know, the receipt matches that line item, and that you have all your, they look at all the grants, they look at another extensive list of requests. It takes, it takes, Eileen, you know, a month or more to put together to answer all the questions for the auditors. So.
I will say what they do is on credit card transactions, because in the world we live in, there are certain, there are a lot of places where you can't do anything but purchase with a credit card. So we have a library credit card. They go through all 12 months, every receipt against a statement. If I don't have a state, a receipt to match the statement, they put a notation in the audit, that's how specific it gets, so.
Lot of, lot of financial stuff that has to be taken care of.
Well, do I have two questions? First, I love the highlights, that's really nice. And can I assume that if it's not highlighted blue or brown, then that is being funded through donations?
100%.
So then my, or library, yeah, library.
My next question is, I see some things here that seems like they're part of operating, and they should be blue, but they're not, but maybe that's because we don't get the funding we actually need to run the darn place.
And that's why.
That'd be something like the internet access? I mean, that's a utility.
Internet access is actually, we do get reimbursement through federal funds, so I can put that.
Okay.
I can make another color.
Something called E-rate, and those are federal.
There are some things that could be considered operational.
Yes.
Correct.
Who we, that we just don't have the funding to.
And we're open to talk to the Board of Supervisors, like, if they want their money to go to a certain place, that's also another conversation we can have.
Yeah.
If they want, if they'd rather not pay for, I don't know what they wouldn't want to pay for, but anyway, if there's something, you know, if they want to spend it here.
They want to talk.
If they want to talk and say, "Hey, we'd rather our money go here," that's a dialogue, that's a, you know, something we can talk about. But I think their money, I think the money is going to the right places, to be honest, then most of the time.
I, I think, I will hate to throw it out to you, but if there is federal money, making that a color might make it. Well, and it's, it's a good point, and we probably need to do it. We applied through the E-rate program. We apply every year for internet assistance, and we're considered rural according to their standards. So we'll get a 70% reimbursement. We always qualify for our internet connection. But the other thing that we applied for was replacement for some of our Wi-Fi, our Wi-Fi drops, and to add a couple more to the building, because there are places where people go dark. And we got approved for that, and that'll save thousands of dollars, so.
Looking at.
In next year.
Oh, good.
I think adding that extra color just makes it pop out of $200 or.
Making.
In the.
Be.
Donated funds. Because to me, this, I, you know, and the only other thing is if, when a question comes up, like the barn doors came up, I asked you about it, and within five minutes, I had a copy of the receipt, so, and I do that at the government all the time. I go through line by line on those accounts, and if it's a dollar amount but not a description, I'm like, "What was it?" Pull the receipt for me. And they, when I first came on, it was actually shuffling through a shoebox full of receipts. Now they're scanned, so they don't hate me quite as much, because all it is, is click a button on the computer versus digging through a shoebox.
Maintain a chart of accounts that has, like, what goes, like, a definition of, she's giving me the e-bye.
All right, we're going to, we're going to move on.
We'll talk.
Talk about this tomorrow.
Any, any other questions on the finances?
On the finance.
Do donations pay for postage and telephone?
Any, any operating expense that isn't.
Blue.
County gives us about 70%. There's some state aid, and anything left over, we come up with.
Donation, yeah.
That's donations, fundraising.
3% from the endowment fund.
That's, that's a 3% entry, that's why we have the endowment fund, so we can take, it has to be large enough, we can take that interest off.
I'm surprised at some of the things that aren't covered, like telephone and postage.
I know.
Am I right in saying the donors are supplementing the county, in a sense? We, we shouldn't even go there.
Well, I would say, I would say if anything, our, the endowment is. So as long as we get, because usually donors, we try to keep, any kind of, like, typically our donors are like special, special things.
Well, we have, we have fundraising too, that isn't straight donations. We have fundraising events, and they aren't donor-specific, those are activities where we raise funds.
Like the fossil.
And then we have fossil.
Yeah.
So we have, we have avenues that are not, you know, necessarily donated money. So there's different categories of fundraising. Either way, we make it work, and we will continue to make it work.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. The, if you don't have any more questions for finances, or if you do, you're welcome to send them in. All of these blue and brown, all these budgets are on the board packet on the website. Our next category is Development Committee, and I will turn that over to Whitlow.
Thank you. We did not have a Development Committee meeting last month because of the snow, so we're going to wrap up something else here, but want to talk a little bit about the annual appeal wrap-up. We are happy to say we have raised over $65,000. Compared to last year, we raised an extra $14,000, final count of at least annual of $41,000, well, it's $65,000 on top. Breakdown there. Day of Giving, so far, we've raised $20,000 for the Day of Giving, which includes two matching donations, which are fantastic. Dust is still settling, and the final total is still being calculated. Throughout the month of February, we accept the donations for our annual Day of Giving campaign. The campaign is fairly small and primarily relies on social media, so, and signs in the library to garner support. Last year, we raised about $11,500. So this year, we've almost doubled the size of this campaign, so that's fantastic. The next Development Committee will be resuming its bi-monthly schedule on a third Wednesday of each month, beginning April 16th, at 5:00 in Meeting Room B. And also, while we've got it, someone else mentioned something about the Taste of Books, it is literally the best party in town. Tickets.
Give him the microphone.
Do we have a trustee goal for that yet?
Any questions?
Everybody gets five tickets to try to sell, yeah. So tickets are already on sale. Plans are underway. Favorite event? Get yours now. Any other questions for Whitlow?
Anybody? Anyone?
Okay. That takes us over to the Committee on Trust Needs report, and I'll turn it over to Celeste.
To be brief, we did meet in February, and we are accepting applications, we only have one spot on the board. Did email everybody, offer everybody the chance to step down this year if they want to, and apparently, nobody wants to, so. We have an awesome group of people, I am very honored to work with all of you, and we are going to keep going. And March 22nd will be the deadline for any applications. If we receive applications, we will plan to. It, it does say the week of the 24th that we will review applications, but because of my work schedule, I think we just stick that to March 31st, so. Or April 1st, depending on what the committee can do. Aside from that? That's all I have. If anybody has any questions?
Okay, thank you, Celeste. Moving right along, we have the Policies and Bylaw Committee, and our Chair is Kim Emerson.
The Policies and Bylaw Committee met on Monday, March 3rd, to review a proposed amendment to the interlibrary loan policy, which is simply to add the word adult, you should have a copy of the proposed amendment, which the committee recommends for approval, and I'll make a motion at the end of my report. And then in addition to that, we begin our initial review, and I want to emphasize initial review of the Studio 330 user agreement and disclaimer. So we are going to meet again on April the 21st, after Erin has a chance to make some additional revisions, which the committee will review and make additional proposed revisions, then we'll discuss it on April the 21st at 5:30 PM. I am going to move from committee that we amend the interlibrary loan policy to add the word adult as set forth on the proposed policy that's attached to your agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. Reactions to that? I would ask, at this time, that the Bylaws Committee, Kim, when they meet, take a look at the, at the bylaws. The, with the changes to the Articles of Incorporation being approved, it's now going to be some housekeeping needed to be done to the bylaws.
Okay.
Okay. Just give it a, give it a once-over, and then we have to align, align the, one of the paragraphs with what the articles are. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kim? Okay. Okay. Scott, you want to talk about the Building Maintenance Report?
Thanks to Cheryl Cullors, we're invited to attend the county's Building Maintenance Committee meetings that are held monthly, there's a meeting coming up for March. What you've got in your packet is the March report. Thank you to, oh, excuse me. We do a great job of managing the maintenance activities that come up, you know, the, the nature of maintenance is breaking, things break and we have to fix them. We can't anticipate when that's going to happen necessarily. So when we prepared our budget submission for the coming fiscal year, it was based on our best understanding of what we could expect to happen over the next fiscal year, based on an aging building, aging HVAC infrastructure, we anticipate a certain level of spending, but that's simply an anticipation. It's not like salaries where you can calculate out, based on number of people that you have, what the exact amount will be. We projected about a $56,000 increase for Building Maintenance. Most of that comes from the county's decision to pull back participation from Public Works, not all of it, but most of that is attributable to not having the ability to call Public Works and have their staff come over and fix minor things here and there. We now have to engage plumbers and electricians directly in contract for that. So those are real dollars that will be, and we're anticipating that that will go up accordingly. You're, Michelle, your assumption that that would drive down overall costs from Public Works, in theory, I would agree. But when we were trying to come up with our budget, and we tried to engage Public Works to find out what their actual involvement had been, they couldn't tell us what the work effort had been. We know what tickets we've opened, but we don't know the labor hours expended from the county personnel to fix individual problems, and they don't know either. So, Cheryl, I wouldn't expect a corresponding reduction, but it's worth talking to, to them to see what their thoughts are, on how they might be able to cut their costs, but don't expect a dollar-for-dollar shift.
Right, right.
In those costs. Also, you know, when we contract out with an electrician, that costs more than it would cost hour for hour for a county person to come over and do the work, because the private contract rates are much higher.
Yeah.
The upgrades to the men's restroom were completed this month, thank you for that one, Cheryl. And the women's restroom should be finished very soon. And there haven't been any new major items. The roof repairs are holding up, the completion of the HVAC repair was done, and that's paid for and behind us. And so things are looking good going into the fourth quarter of fiscal year.
What were the costs in March for the restrooms? Do you remember?
I don't have the.
We'll see if in March comes in, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about that?
Housekeeping. Your date is March 13th.
Yep, this is the report that will be submitted to the county.
Okay.
For the upcoming meeting.
Thursday. That makes sense. So it's November 13th, probably us. Yep. Computer.
Okay. We good? Thank you, Scott. Chris, do you want to tell us what fossil stuff you hear?
Well, I can't. Our last fossil meeting.
Do we have that option?
Our last fossil meeting was postponed because there was a last-minute conflicting need for the room. We'll be meeting tomorrow night, and in the next Board of Trustees meeting, I will be giving two fossil reports.
Oh, okay.
I beg the board's indulgence.
That's okay. I do want to make sure you thank everybody that helped us with all the forums. that helped us with all the forums, providing the beverages. And the bake sale was a huge success. And thank you for turning the bake sale funds over to us. So that was... Work, and we appreciate you. And now turn it over to Cheryl. If you have anything on the county side you'd like to tell us.
I think, you know, all of you have been to the meeting, so I don't think I need to say anything about that. I said it all during the meeting. But I do want to address Scott's... You know, if we're looking at being financially prudent, it doesn't make sense to me. You know, we're taking taxpayers' money, putting it in your budget to do maintenance. So to me, it would make sense to turn the money back into Public Works instead of giving it out to a private entity. Like you say, it's going to cost more. So if we're going to try to be prudent, that would make the sense to me. There are some things our Public Works guys can't do. So that you're going to have to, you know, hire out for. But for the day-to-day things that when I, you know, realize... Because I've been on the Building Committee since I've been on the board, and it didn't dawn on me that you guys weren't part of that group, that you should be because it's a county building to be maintained. Didn't realize that I was going to set off pulling the rug out from underneath the maintenance by trying to be proactive and looking at the issues and getting ahead of them. Because that's what the Building Committee should be doing, looking at what needs to be addressed now but planning for the future of what we've got coming down the road. Because this place, the HVAC, is this huge chiller that takes up a huge portion of that side of the library. We have those in the schools. And right now, we're looking at replacing part of the one at the Sheriff's Department that's $500,000. So the high school, I think probably both high schools, they're having issues. They're hanging on by a thread. And they're part of the discussion and will be on the agenda for discussion again. So to me, it just made sense. Walk through here, see what the problems are, document them, and get them on the radar so that we know they're going to crop up and we're aware of them. And so I'm hopeful that maybe that can still be a process that we get back in. I'm still hopeful. And I think what I said Tuesday about, I think, all three boards... I mean, I disagree with the new library board. I felt like we should have started out working together. Like you said at the beginning, you give us a budget, and you say, this is what we need. We look at it, and I go back to my first budget with the library, and we said, we can't do it. And you picked out the things that... The carpet and different things that you could kick down the road like every other department does. We agreed on it, no problem. We didn't fall out over it. So, you know, and whoever said, I wish, I think, Melody, of why can't we agree to disagree congenially? I don't know why. But I'm still hopeful. I'm one of these, when the glass is half-full, I see it half-full instead of half-empty. So I'm trying to maintain that with this, that somehow, maybe, we can all sit down together, all get online with what is it financial information we need? Because I feel like you're more than willing to give it. And how we can move on past all the misinformation. And I would like to say this, and I know I'm being taken, but I'll take the beating if anybody gets upset. I think we need to stop engaging so much on social media. I said, and I'm going to use you as... I told my husband the other day, I said, I guess because I've worked so much around kids, you know, when the kid comes in and he's going, Miss Colors, Miss Colors, Miss Colors, Miss Colors, and I'm on the telephone, and they're still doing Miss Colors, I don't flip all out over it, doesn't matter. So I told my husband, I said, you know, sometimes it's better to ignore what's going on and that bothers people more. I said, because I can stand here and do this to you expecting a result. But if you don't... And I'll do it to get the result. But if you don't give it to me, I'm going to give up and go away. So I really think that we all need to stop engaging so much because I see so much ugly engagement. And that's not... That's not... I've lived here my entire life. I've raised my kids. I had you at school. That's just not the way... I mean, I got on the Board of Supervisors because of my kids and my grandkids. I want to make it better for them. And when we get into these back-and-forths on Facebook, that's not our community. And I would just ask that people stop engaging, and maybe the information will fall to the side because there's no engagement on it. So that's my report.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any questions for Mrs. Cullors? Okay. We are going to go into a closed meeting. And Lori's going to read a motion for us to do that. Do that after. We'll do that after. The old business and new business, we'll put at the end. We'll move to the end of the agenda, if that's okay with everybody. We need to get... We have an appointment, so we need to move into a closed session. That means that we're going to ask you... First, we'll read the motion. You don't have to go yet. Read the motion in an open meeting. And but then you're welcome to be in the library and come back because when we come out of the closed session, we'll read the coming-out motions. And you're welcome to come back and listen to those if you want. And if not, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Is there any way that you could make an announcement when you guys are coming out? Can you do that?
I think we can do that, yeah. Yeah. Do you want to go read a book or something?
We'll have those covering too. So if you don't see them on the door, then...
Then you'll know that we're there, yeah. Hold on. I'm going to ask Lori to go ahead.
Before she does, I just want to announce I'm leaving because I don't want any conflict with closed sessions. So I will leave, and I got to go to Brown Town for their meeting anyways.
Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. Very much.
Cheryl, would you like to stay to at least hear us go into...
I'd like to... Okay, I can do that. We need to make a motion to amend the agenda. Can I have a motion?
A motion that we move into our closed session and then continue with the old business and new business after we go, after our closed session.
Okay, can I have a second?
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. The agenda's been changed and voted on. And then Lori, if you would make your motion.
I move the Board of Trustees' go into a closed session in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2/3711A.6 for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations. Further, I move the Board of Trustees' go into a closed session in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A.7 and 2.2-3711A.8 for legal matters concerning ongoing litigation and library services.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?